No.
Did I see that? Do what I do. Put out or you want to. This one's brand new. They still wet. Yeah.
You are an ass.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Why you doing this?
I just got back. I just got back from Michigan, up in Iowa. West Virginia and Tennessee. West Virginia and Tennessee. I just got back. And then I get back about eleven thirty. About eight o'clock.
So he's like, oh, like, that's a start.
That's a town.
Yeah, it was twenty seven.
He's with Prince.
Spring by spring.
It's all about the phone.
Good for the guy.
She has a seat.
I don't see anything.
I'm very nice.
Yeah.
You don't have to be too kind of fashion.
He's back in.
Yeah, I believe.
Good work.
I did it too, to my wife's sake.
This one talking.
That's good.
Start with something.
That one's highlighted.
Yeah, I saw.
Well, not quite.
Day late, the dollar. Day late, the dollar.
I'm trying.
Let's, let's go down.
Trying to keep it good.
I saw.
I saw very much.
My shoes.
Oh, my shoes.
But actually, it's right.
I don't know.
So I'm about to.
No.
They're doing four hundred.
I see.
So.
He did.
I'll do it.
Here, what happened?
This is my year.
The thing that.
Three years.
There's a kid.
For the.
And I'm.
How are you doing?
I don't know. But I.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
I figured we could make three.
Today, tomorrow.
My life.
I don't know what time. But I see you wouldn't work that long.
Yeah, I haven't been doing your.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I can understand.
Okay. Maybe.
I would like to support.
I asked.
People talk.
One. What's this?
I made two.
You say it. You say it now. Then you definitely know him. What? That was all. Hey, I saw. Cause of that last day. Zoo. Well, that's busy. Uh.
We should change.
How's Rachel? Yeah. You did send it. I have to flash her a little bit. This is today. Got me to play out my last. Let me know, Raj. Okay. Uh, good evening. Wow. You can hear me now, can't you? Move it back. All right. Good evening. Welcome to Wednesday, April fifth. City Council meeting. Our invocation will be provided by Muriel Ludeman. Independence Alive and Well Initiative. And then please stand and remain standing for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Believing that we are all here at this appointed time on earth by God to do His business, I offer this blessing upon all gathered tonight. In the name of Jesus Christ, I pray blessing upon this council and all those gathered for the mayor and council members, for health and well-being for all, for a spirit of cooperation and unity of thought that comes directly from God. May the Holy Spirit generously pour out Himself into and upon all of you this night and all the days ahead. May you receive knowledge, truth, light, wisdom, that only God can give. May you all find favor with one another and honor and respect to each one's unique perspective. May God bless you with good relations with all involved in this session and all those that follow, and that you can see how all opinions have value in reaching solutions. May the love of God and His joy, peace, kindness, and gentleness prevail in all your proceedings. I pray the best solutions come from your deliberations. I pray and may the projects that come from here bear fruit and bring success to our community. I pray for health and well-being to all those who enter these sessions. May you all prosper even as you help all independent citizens prosper. May we all know and experience the love of God personally and collectively. May we all be kept from evil. May all we do be good and without reproach. May God expand our influence for good beyond independent city limits so that our city becomes known for many, many good things that she has in her people. And in Jesus Christ's name, I pray this very humbly. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spears.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
McCandless.
Here.
Steinmeier.
Mayor.
Hobart.
Here.
Mayor Rowland.
Here.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, make the motion that we move, um, the presentation, uh, for twenty-three seven twenty-five and also the proclamation up to, uh, the beginning of the agenda.
Okay. We've got a motion to move an item closer to the front of the agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second and any discussion? Seeing no discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
No.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. Thank you. And we'll ha- we'll do a pre-proclamation and then, uh, so with the first one, we have the I-Star Award. So, Madam City Clerk, can you please read the bill?
Bill number twenty-three dash seven-two-five, a resolution recognizing Tua Falatongo Ahi, maintenance worker two with the Parks, Recreation and Tourism Department as the I-Star Award recipient for April twenty-twenty-three. Do you have the word or do you want this word?
Do you want to read it?
I agree. Whereas the service recognition program recognizes outstanding performance and exemplary acts of service by employees of the City of Independence, and whereas an employee recognition committee selects the I-Star Independence Service and Teamwork Above Responsibilities Award recipient for exhibiting the qualities and ideals that best represent public service, and whereas the service recognition committee has selected Tua Falatongo Ahi, maintenance worker two with the Parks, Recreation and Tourism Department as the I-Star recipient for April twenty-twenty-three.
And Tua, come on up. Two. Appreciate it. Appreciate you looking for the same. Thank you. The next room's a proclamation, so please proceed.
Whereas Seven Days Make a Ripple Change the World is an annual event to overcome hatred, bigotry, and ignorance. Whereas Seven Days continues with themed days of love, discover, others, connect, you, go, and onward as we bring people from different faiths and cultures together to overcome evil with acts of kindness. And whereas the memories of three wonderful and unique people, Dr. William Copren, Reeve Underwood, and Terry Lamano, who lost their lives in April of twenty-fourteen due to acts of hatred, will live on and will be cherished. And whereas Seven Days expands its acts of compassion, tolerance, and understanding to those who gather and celebrate the lives lost due to acts of hatred and intolerance. Whereas we fully support and encourage all in Independence, including residents, businesses, visitors, to come together during the seven days, two weeks of celebratory activities to recognize that evil, ignorance, and hatred will be eliminated by understanding kindness and love. Now therefore, Rory R. Rowland, Mayor of the City of Independence, Missouri, hereby proclaims April fifth through April sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three, and recognition of Seven Days in Independence, Missouri, and urges all citizens to remember the events of April thirteenth, twenty-fourteen, not only for the losses of that day, but also for the significance of the powerful and enduring vow to overcome evil with good.
Is anyone here, anyone here to accept the proclamation? Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right. And that will bring us to citizen requests. And since it's a little bit different, we're not at City Hall this evening, you can come right up here to use this microphone. Is that correct, City Manager? The one right there. All right, very good. Uh, the first person is, I believe it's Ron Mar- Maradella, I believe it is. And, uh, and if you can, Ron, please state your address and, uh, and you'll have five minutes. Thank you, Ron.
Mayor, members of the council, my name's Ron Maradella. I live at twenty-three hundred South Seminole Drive in Independence. I'm here in, tonight, um, to question the issue that happened today at eighteen-eight-one-eight Salisbury where my son lives. I got a phone call earlier that said, Dad, please get over there. They're taking the guardrail out. Any of you that are familiar with that curve on Salisbury, west of Jones? Why that guardrail was picked? I don't know. I tried to ask the crew to please stop till I could get ahold of somebody and see if we could get a stop or a resolution to this. I got nowhere. They told me it's coming out. I got as far as engineering uptown here at the building, and they told me that they did a study, and because of the speed limit, the slope of the road, and, um, you know, the fact that guardrails are not to protect personal property. But to me, the issue in my mind is all the wrecks that have been there, two houses have been hit. My son's wife, one time, came home, parked the car after coming to the grocery store, got the kids out of the house, went in, closed the door, and heard screech, boom, looked out the window, and her car was shoved over into the car next to, next to it. I was told by them that they only are there to protect big items like trees, and there's a three-foot oak tree right there that's got more battle scars than a grenade victim. So I don't know why that thing was taken out of there. I implore the council, I beg the council to please relook at that and see if that thing can be put back because there's a crosswalk there. Not a crosswalk, there's a sidewalk. There's a bus stop right down from there. This is right from Powhatan going west on Salisbury. And anybody that's traveled Salisbury at all knows about the black ice. Every time it rains, it's so slick on that road, you can barely keep under control on the straightaway. I realize the speed limit is thirty miles an hour, but a few people have misread that sign and come around that curve, and there's been a lot of damage done. I was told it was studied over the last two years, and they didn't see enough accident reports to warrant keeping it. Uh, my question is, the number of people that have come down around that curve and rode that thing like a skateboarder, you know, just like a skateboarder, once they got back on their wheels, the way they went. There are a lot of instances weren't even reported there. I don't know how many cars have been totaled and hit, but, um, I would like to have them look back into this and see if there's any possible way that thing can be put back. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next is Barbara Elliott. And Barbara, you can come on up and then please state your address, and you have five minutes.
My name is Barbara Elliott, and I live at twenty-eight fifty-five South Harvard Avenue. And, um, our apartment building has been established there for quite a while. I was under the understanding that, uh, there had been a sign regarding the new construction that would be, be putting up there, and we were under the impression that they were going to be duplexes. However, it has come to our attention since that time that they are not duplexes, they are fourplexes, which means sixty new families in a two-block area. I feel that's an awfully lot of, lot of people in that close of proximity, um, who are having incidents with, with people, um, parking their cars in our parking lot for people that don't live in our apartment building. And, uh, we have also had, uh, incidents of, of, uh, kids using their skateboards and bicycles coming down into our parking lot. Uh, our apartment building is just for, is for senior citizens, and we are have, now having problems with, um, kids riding their, their playthings in our parking lot, and we've had some incidents where they've kind of run into some of our residents, and it needs to really be, uh, we're in the process of trying to get signage up. The construction people, uh, backed their car in, or their, one of their trucks into our, uh, existing signs, so we're having to put the new ones up. And we're in the process of that, but we were wondering if this council could not put some kind of sign up, um, with all that number of cars and, and vehicles being in the area with all the new residents. They need to know that they either have to park in their driveways, um, but not really on the street. The street is not very wide. It's not even lined for two-way traffic. And so we're, we're concerned that, uh, emergency vehicles and such are not going to be able to get down the street if too many people are parking on the street. So if there's any way that the city can maybe post either, uh, one-way traffic parking or no, no, uh, street parking whatsoever, we would really appreciate something like that, and, and possibly, uh, with, with no front yards and backyards, the children may be at play and out in the street, and even though they shouldn't be, uh, they probably need to have some kind of sign to tell people when they're turning into our street that there may be children at play. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Doctor Penny, I hope I pronounced this correctly, Rufener. Did I pronounce it correctly?
Rufener.
Rufener, thank you. Thank you, doctor. And please state your, um, your address, please.
Okay, my name is Doctor Penny Rufener. I am also at twenty-eight fifty-five South Harvard Avenue. I have given you these, if you could take just a minute and look at them. Also, I believe the mayor has a signature sheet of those that were interested in our building in the resolution of this. We weren't able to get around to all of them, but the ones we did get around to were concerned simply for some of the same reasons we're having some of the kids that live there now in these, uh, fourplexes. It's a two-block area. They are running aggressively upon our residents, uh, with their skateboards, and when the residents ask them not to, they, it was, it got, it, I'll just say that it degenerated. It escalated into a real serious problem. And we have photos of it. We have talked with the police, I have talked with them, and they said that they would be patrolling the area. We want to make sure that that is done. We feel that a police president, presence would be good since they are subsidized and, I mean, not saying that that's a, a negative thing, that's a very good thing. It gives people a good place to live. But we, as seniors, we need to have a safe place to live. So if, if you get a chance to look at this, I'd like to just direct your attention to number one, two, three, four, and six, and that is, if you could please consider putting up signs saying off-street parking now rather than later. I wanted to ask the council about that. If you could do that now and not wait until the construction is completed because If you could do that now and not wait until the construction is completed, because the problems we're having are problems now. So that was, that's it, that's basically it. Thank you.
Thank you, doctor. Next, we have Lucy Young, and Lucy, come on up, and please state your address, please. Thank you.
Lucy Young, 2320 Viking Drive. Please table non-ordinance action item number three. It is premature and has not gone through the proper protocols. Number three is only getting this one reading. There hasn't been a study session for discussion or any in citizen input. Number three has not been presented to the PUAB for their consideration. There was a lot of council discussion to keep the Charter Review Commission non-political. The Charter Commission meets tomorrow night, and IPL is, IPL is on their agenda for discussion. Should they conclude that the council wants to sell IPL? The ver- at the very least amend number three to remove the language that spells out the dates to place it on the ballot. This is a charter violation. In the October 5th, 2020, regular meeting minutes, and I quote, "A council member stated that we needed to get a good handle on where we're going to do long-term things here as they're changing rapidly." He said that the council needs to work together to get a clear vision. Then, a council member, the same council member, suggested that the PUAB provides its recommendations, and then the council has a retreat to discuss and hash out a plan for IPL. Sage advice. Please have IPL staff present all the expert reports at a council retreat, including Sawville, Burnson Mac, and DKMT. Also in the October 5th, 2020, regular meeting minutes, and again, I quote, "Another council member stated that there has not been a reason given to why this need, this item needed to be added to tonight's agenda." A council member stated that the community and the PUAB had not had the opportunity to consider this resolution. A council member stated that the charter says that matters of IPL go through the PUAB except in event of emergency, and there is no emergency. That same council member stated that the council has to stop thinking like they can do whatever they want, and stated that the charter must be followed and leave the decisions up to the PUAB. That same council member stated that the PUAB has had four studies, and each has been ignored and rushed past. That same council member stated that the job of the, of the Board of Directors is to set a high-level strategy and solve problems that are unsolvable by the people working there each day. He stated that IPL is our biggest asset and our biggest albatross. While some consider IPL an albatross, I think that considering to sell IPL is like killing the golden goose. IPL provides millions of dollars of benefit to the city and its citizens. The municipal rate saves over $600,000 a year in the general fund. Former PUAB Garland, member Garland Land called IPL a cash cow. Non-ordinance action item number one needs to be approved. Our PUAB unanimously endorsed these turbines at their November 17th, 2022 meeting. The only thing that is accomplished by pushing down this, down the road is adding millions of dollars to the price tag. Haste makes waste. Every consultant's report for the past decade has included recommendations to maintain IPL internal generation. Reports from industry experts, including renewable energy groups, say that this type of generation is critical to support wind and solar. IPL staff has been working on this proposal at the direction for the, of the council for the last two years. Their proposal for the turbines will provide 90 megawatts of capacity at the Old Blue Valley Power Plant. Right now, SPP transmission cost for this proposal is zero dollars. This is a one-time break, we won't get again. Opportunity is knocking. It would be foolish not to utilize that FERC waiver. The ratepayers could be left holding a $45 million bag in addition with the transmission cost on another project.
You have one minute.
Thank you. IPL has won multiple awards for being the most reliable electric utilities in the country. The ratepayers like having power when they flip on a switch. At 10 o'clock last night, Evergy had 136 outages with 6,000 customers without power, and some of them weren't assigned to be fixed. 60 of those were just outside our borders with Blue Summit. At the same time, IPL had one outage with five customers out of power, and they were already on the scene making repairs. While you may feel like you aren't competent to make this decision, I can assure you that Mr. Walker's staff is fully qualified. They hired them because they are the utility experts. I urge you to trust our IPL director and his staff. The new generate, new generators were twice the cost, but had the same one-year warranty. Wind and solar have changed how the market works, and we need to adapt those changes. While these two turbines won't solve all of IPL's problems, staff has laid out a plan to build a healthier utility. These turbines are just the first step. Remember, council members, have blamed previous councils for kicking this can down the road. You don't want to be known for throwing out the baby with the bathwater. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry for sounding angry, I'm not, I'm nervous.
Oh, that's perfectly okay. Perfectly good. Thank you, Lucy. Uh, next is Steve Clement. And if you can please state your address, please proceed. Thank you, Steve.
This is the first time I've ever applauded him since college, man. And Steve Clements, I live at 413 East Devan Street, and I went and voted yesterday, and they were taking a petition outside, and I, she said, can I see you after you leave? I said, what's it about? And she says, well, it's about, I said, it's about the dog. She said, yeah. I said, if you sign this, you'll be able to vote yes or no when it comes up on the, uh, on the ballot to be voted. And I said, well, I thought the petition was for those that were wanting to repeal it. No, you get a chance to vote if it's on the ballot. I said, I want to read that. Well, she had it hidden underneath, and I finally pulled it out, and it said the signatures were for to repeal that ordinance that's already in existence. So a person that's against the pit bulls that almost killed Allen Hill would have been signing something, didn't have to sign. Like, so I called around, and Mike guided me to the right people, and I got absolutely, I, I thought the signature should have been pulled, because other people found out what I found out, that they were being misled by the person that was taking the signatures, and I was very disappointed. I don't know what you folks think, but, uh, if, if you're going to sign something, you don't know exactly what it, it shouldn't have to sign something if you're against it. If they want to get people that are in favor of removing it, that's what the signature should have been for. So that's what I thought somebody ought to look into that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Uh, next is Jason White. Jason, here.
Good evening, Jason White, I live at 1024 South Forest. I'm here to talk about the pit bull ban, so thank you for bringing that up. I apologize if you felt misled. The language in the petition is what was approved by the city clerk, it was reviewed by the city attorney, it's stock language. The language isn't buried anywhere, it's at the very top of the petition. And the reality is, upon signing that, the city council then has, uh, two options. They can either put the issue on the ballot, or, as in 2006, they can say this is a representation. So, you're correct, I didn't encourage anybody who opposed the pit bull ban to sign it. But I can tell you that if you signed it and you feel like you were misrepresented, leave me your name, we will find that, that page, and we will draw a line through that, and you can initial it, so you're removed from that. And if you find anybody else in that case, I'm happy to do that. I can say that because, A, I want to make sure you're treated fairly. So part of my comment tonight is, this is an issue that's going to end up before the council. Today, we have 1,800 signatures out of the 3,500 in our goal. I don't think we're going to have very many in your case, because I think we had a very good team out there. We had over 30 people out collecting signatures, we've got over 40 people out and out collecting signatures. We'll make sure that they're cognizant, that they need to make sure that people are aware that they're supporting the issue, because you may have a chance at a ballot, but that is not a sure. The issue is before the council, and they may act like they did in 2006, and just take those, those, those signatures as an indication of public sentiment. So we don't want you to feel deceived. But at the end of the day, I'm quite confident that the vast, vast majority of those, because I know of the 102 I turned in, I even had one individual who seemed a little confused, and we said, no, you need to hold on. So, I'm pretty confident we're going to end up very, uh, over the, the mark. But the thing I really wanted to talk about today is, no matter where you stand on the issue, it is a failed policy. So, if you're in the animal welfare world, everybody bar none says, we have more pit bulls today in Independence than we did in 2006. So if the pit bull ban was intended to make our community safer by eliminating them, it completely failed, because we have more today than we'd had in 2006. The other thing that's a failure on the city's, on the city's record is their use of the dangerous dog ordinance. So, that's where every other city in the metropolitan area, except for Lee Wood and Carney, they also have pit bull bans, that's where they put the emphasis for the citizens' protections. So if you, if you, if you have a dog in the neighborhood, are they aggressive? Are they dangerous? Are they vicious? As I talked to people at the polls yesterday, I was amazed at how many people had both good and bad stories, but how few people knew we had a dangerous dog ordinance. And the few that did, when I asked them, do you know much about it? The answer was no. So I talked to somebody who, who was an elderly person, they had some mobility problems, and they no longer walked in their neighborhood, and they attributed part of it because, to dogs that scared them. And I said, do you have a phone? And they said, yes. And I said, did you take pictures? And can you, did you turn it in under the dangerous dog ordinance? And the answer was no, they weren't aware of that. But they are aware there's a pit bull ban. That's a media frenzy. That's been a media frenzy since 2006. So, let's talk about 2006 a little bit.
You have one minute.
Thank you. So in 2006, somebody that got themselves arrested, prosecuted, and convicted for using dogs as a weapon promoted this entire situation. They were viciously attacked, that was terrible. But what if they'd have been German shepherds? What if they'd have been rottweilers? Any dog that's abused and, and unkept is going to be a dangerous dog at some point in time. The pit bulls are not inherently dangerous, there is no national group of veterinarians or animal welfare people that think they are. So, as we move forward, watch for us on Facebook, we're close to having 2,000 signatures, and we'll be back when we, uh, reach our goal. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, let's see, what's next on the agenda? I'm going to give you those, I don't want to lose them. Say what? Oh, yep. So that brings us to the consent agenda, and, uh...
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Oh.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, hold on, one second. We didn't vote on 23-725, so if we can go back and do that, and then we'll come back to your motion, Mr. Hobart. Um, if there's no discussion on...
We need a motion in a second.
I need to, I was going to go ahead and do that, move to approve, uh, 23-725.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rolland?
Yes. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Uh, before I, uh, move on the consent agenda, uh, I've been notified there was, uh, one person that did not sign up to speak. Are we going to allow non-signups to speak tonight? We, we do that from time to time, is that okay? Uh, Mr. Ken Love wanted to speak.
Okay. Uh, we'll indulge the, the body, and I will turn it over to the, the will of the body. Uh, so I would, I would like to have a motion and a second, and actually a vote on it.
I would move to allow Mr. Ken Love to speak.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay. Uh, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rolland?
Yes. Mr. Love, please proceed.
Kenneth Love, 16, 16808 East George Franklin Drive, Independence, Missouri. First off, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, council, for allowing me to come up here and speak. And I'm speaking on my residence, where I live is Milton Estates. A few years back, council and mayor met in my neighborhood over, and city manager, over a couple of trees. They decided these trees was a hazard. They also decided these trees belonged to the City of Independence, and the reason I'm bringing this up is due to the fact, still to the day, nothing has been done about these trees. The reason I speak about the trees is because of the action that has been taking place in the last several weeks of Milton Estates. Milton Estates is a homeowners association, so we, the residents of Milton Estates, have paid for and put our own personal signs in, nice signs. All of a sudden, the city came up with an ordinance that passed that stop signs now have to be seven feet high. I do know the, um, Milton Estates president reached out, spoke with it, with the city, what about our poles? Why aren't we being grandfathered in? Well, this is a new ordinance, and they all have to be seven feet. Boy, it sure didn't take the city long to get out there and start pulling our nice, beautiful poles out, and I'm sorry, the ones they put in look so cheap. Now, yes, our, our association was giving, um, the right to purchase new poles, but the cost of metal is skyrocketing. There's nothing wrong with our poles, they're very nice. So since we didn't get grandfathered in on these poles, I've been riding all four districts, councilmen. Every district has stop signs that are under seven foot. Not only that, these poles that are under seven foot are round poles compared to the new square poles with all the holes in it, so that the city can properly adjust the signs up and down. Well, I'll tell you how good this sign is that they put on the corner of my house, a stop sign with George Franklin and 36. It's bent halfway over from the winds last night. I went out there and pushed it forward. My thing is, if the city is so quick to act on posts that is so beautiful in the neighborhood and makes the neighborhood look real good, we even have mailboxes posts that look like our other posts. Um, I, I, I just don't understand why they're not so quick to remove these trees and fix a sidewalk that is approximately two foot lifted off of the ground. It, these trees are a safety hazardous. I have reported that myself. Um, it is hard, if you come to the proper place to stop, there's a white line, you cannot see looking to the south of Lee Summit Road until the vehicles are right there on you to make that left turn. I'm just trying to figure out why the trees haven't been taken down. Why hasn't the sidewalk been fixed?
You have one minute.
Because the sidewalk, there's a lot of pedestrians walk up and down Lee Summit Road, is a hazardous. Are we looking for problems? I personally feel the posts should have been grandfathered, and I just also want to know when is a city going to go around and start pulling all of these other signs? I've got a list. I've got 462 signs, that's going to take a lot of man work, a lot of hours. When do y'all want the list, and when are you going to start? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Love.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move to approve the reports and recommendations of the city manager.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, any discussion? Any items want to be pulled out? Seeing no discussion, um, Madam City Clerk, we can take the roll.
Councilmember Spears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rolland?
Yes, and the consent agenda is approved, 7 to the 0. Thank you. And the consent agenda is approved 7 to 0. Thank you. Uh, this takes us to our first public hearing. Public hearing.
A public hearing for the rezoning from C2 General Commercial and R30 PUD High Density Residential Planned Unit Development, R6 Single Family Residential, for the properties located at 137 East College Street, 110, 116, 118, and 120 East Farmer Street, 112, 113, 116, 118, 120, 121, 125, 127, 130, 134, and 137 East Waldo Avenue, and 501, 507, 601, 605, 609, 615, 617, 619, and 623 North Main Street. New information only.
Thank you, Mayor members of the council. My name is Rick Arroyo. I'm the Assistant Community Development Director here at the city. Uh, this is a city-initiated rezoning that was considered by Planning Commission on February 14th of this year. Uh, Planning Commission did, uh, majority voted in favor of this rezoning. Uh, this rezoning began, a property owner in this area was wishing to rezone one of the commercial lots here to an R6 single-family, uh, to reflect the current use of that lot. Staff recognized that there was a cluster of, uh, single-family homes that were either R30 PUD or zone commercial. So we went ahead and did the city-initiated rezoning in order to make those legal non-conforming properties conforming. Um, the purpose of that, of course, was to correct those lots that would allow these structures to, uh, be rebuilt, rehabbed, refinanced, or sold without conflict. I have no new information to provide.
Okay. Thank you very much. And this will close the public hearing. Madam City Clerk?
Bill number 23-020, An Ordinance Approving Rezonings From District R30 PUD High Density Residential Planned Unit Development and District C2 General Commercial to District R6 Single Family Residential for the properties located at 137 East College Street, 110, 116, 118, and 120 East Farmer Street, 112, 113, 116, 118, 120, 121, 125, 127, 130, 134, and 137 East Waldo Avenue, and 501, 507, 601, 605, 609, 615, 617, 619, and 623 North Main Street in Independence, Missouri. Second and final reading.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. 23-020 passes 7 to 0. This takes us to the second public hearing.
A public hearing for the application by SMJ RelLC requesting a rezoning from C1 Neighborhood Commercial to C2 General Commercial for the north part of the property located at 3300 South Blue Ridge Cut Off. New information only.
Thank you again. This rezoning was also considered by Planning Commission on February 14th of this year. Uh, majority of Planning Commission did vote in favor of this rezoning also. Uh, this rezoning is for a property at 3300 South Blue Ridge Cut Off that has currently have two zonings, um, on the actual lot and separating, um, a building that has two zonings on it as well. Uh, the property owner wishes to, uh, move those, the C1 and a C2 to the consistent C2 rezoning. Um, and that is pretty much my report on that, and I have no new information to provide.
Thank you very much. Okay. That'll close the public hearing. Madam City Clerk?
Bill number 23-021, An Ordinance Approving a Rezoning from District C1 Neighborhood Commercial to District C2 General Commercial for the property at 3300 Blue Ridge Cut Off in Independence, Missouri. Second and final reading.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And item 23-021 passes 7 to 0. This takes us to our third public hearing.
A full public hearing for the application from Casey's Marketing Company, DBA Minute Mart 4342, for a retail selling of intoxicating liquor of all kinds in the original package license for Minute Mart 4342 that will be located at 17600 East 39th Street South. This is a full public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Tom Skinnell. I'm the Community Development Director. Uh, this application is for the, uh, Minute Mart, uh, located at 39th and Cracker Neck Road. Uh, Casey's Marketing Company is purchasing, uh, all five of the Minute Mart's locations in Independence, and in about six months will be converting those to Casey's. They are seeking a new, uh, liquor license under their name, uh, and will operate the same way as Minute Mart has operated. Uh, this location does have, uh, a few establishments that have liquor licenses nearby, Longhorn Steakhouse, Target, Quick Trip, and Walmart. Uh, but this application meets the, uh, alcoholic beverage code, and staff has nothing further to add.
Thank you very much. Um, I did have a public hearing. Anyone wanna speak in opposition of, in favor of, or informational purposes only? Anyone wanna speak in favor of or in opposition to? Anyone wanna speak in favor of or opposition to? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Madam City Clerk?
Council action is requested on the application received from Casey's Marketing Company, DBA Minute Mart 4342, for a retail selling of intoxicating liquor of all kinds in the original package license for Minute Mart 4342 that will be located at 17600 East 39th Street South.
Thank you. Uh, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Um, just a real brief question for Mr. Skinnell. Do you know if they're gonna do any remodeling or reconstruction of any of the buildings?
At this point, we don't know. Uh, that was not provided as part of this application. Uh, but any type of remodeling work, uh, would require a permit, and, uh, the city would review that.
Fair enough. Thank you, that's all.
Okay. Any other discussion, any other further questions? If I can ask one question, Mr. Skinnell. Uh, how do you, Mr. Arroyo decide who's gonna take what topic? Flip a coin, how do you do it?
So he, uh, he had a pitch clock violation, so I thought that I would relieve him.
Good answer, I love that. Yes, sir.
Does this have to do with just that one Minute Mart or the all of them?
Uh, that's...
Because I have concerns about the 1 on 24 Highway, 1-1...
Yeah, there's a public hearing for each one of them.
It's gonna be in each individual?
Yeah, and what address are you looking for?
1-124 Highway, it is, uh, 11715 East 24 Highway, 114343.
It's the...
The next one.
It's the next one, and you can come up and talk when we have that public hearing. So thank you for asking. Okay. All right. Uh, any other discussion, questions? Okay. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And this passes 7 to 0. This takes us to the fourth public hearing. Let me open that.
A full public hearing for the application received from Casey's Marketing Company, DBA Minute Mart 4343, for a retail selling of intoxicating liquor of all kinds in the original package for Minute Mart 4343 located at 11715 East US 24 Highway. This is a full public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, so this Minute Mart location is located along 24 Highway and Forest Avenue. Uh, Casey's will be acquiring this one as well. Uh, their plan is to convert that over to Casey's in approximately six months. Uh, they are seeking the liquor license, and there's no active liquor licenses within a thousand feet of this location. Uh, that concludes staff's presentation, and we're available for any questions.
Okay. Any questions from the council? Please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Skinnell, will this just be a transfer of license?
No, this is gonna be a brand-new license. Uh, Casey's is going to, to hold the license. Uh, they're operating it, uh, as a different entity than what, uh, previously held the Minute Mart.
Is there currently a license there?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussion, questions? And this, yeah, so it's a full public hearing. Anyone wanna speak in favor of or opposed to, please come forward, sir. And if you could, just please state your name and your address, so if you could do that, I'd be grateful. Thank you.
My name is Mark Pope. Oh, I own the property at 917 North Forest. I'm here with a few neighbors, Ms. Joanne Clark here, and Representative ABC Dental, which is all within the 300 feet of property or the proposed liquor license. Um, basically, I'd like to say we oppose having a liquor store right there on our back. Um, let's see here. There's a gas station directly across the street in Sugar Creek that sells liquor, and then one street light west is Apple Market, which sells liquor. Uh, we are opposed to having in our neighborhood, and I'm just wondering, how many liquor stores do you need in a quarter of a mile of 24 Highway? So, with that said, we do oppose. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else want to talk in favor or in opposition? And if you could, please state your name and your address, please.
Hi, my name is Kami Beard. I am the office manager at ABC Dental at 1619 West US Highway 24, directly across from the store. Um, I oppose of it just because we already have a lot of issues with, um, like abuse with the drugs and things like that. We're children's dental office, and we constantly find used needles and things of that nature in our back of our area of our building, the side of our building. We've already had, um, issues of people lighting fires in our area as well, and we just kinda feel like adding a liquor store right there is just gonna kind of give them the fuel for that to just kinda make it worse. So, we just, we oppose also.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone here to speak in favor or opposition to? Okay. If you'd like, we could bring a microphone up to you. Hold on one second. Do you wanna come up, or you want us to bring you a microphone? Okay.
Wherever I go, the walker goes. No, I oppose having a liquor store in there. We, we have bought that, that property, different ones around there, and we have made a good neighborhood out of it. We don't want the noise and confusion, the danger, the mess, the trash being thrown, and our front use, front yards being used as a toilet. We would very much, um, plead that you've not approved this.
Thank you very much. Anyone here to speak in opposition or in favor of? Anyone else to speak in favor of or opposition to? And thank you for coming out tonight. Okay? Uh, with that, if there's anyone else to speak in favor of or opposition to, I'll close this public hearing. Any discussion amongst the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
So, what is, is that Phillips 66, is that... Is that Phillips 66 Minute Mart, is that currently, is that correct?
Is that correct?
Is it not held with a liquor license?
Uh, I'll ask Tom Skinnell to return.
Please proceed.
So the current, um, gas station does have a liquor license, which is, uh, the retail selling of, um, alcoholic beverages in the original package, and, uh, that is what Casey's is, uh, the same license that Casey's is seeking.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I didn't, uh, hear that. I thought, I thought Councilman Perkins asked earlier, and there was a comment that it was a new license. Did I mishear that?
So this would be considered a, a new license. Um, it is, Minute Mart has an existing license. It is under their name. Uh, Casey's is, uh, through their agreement to acquire the Minute Mart's, is seeking a new license under their name.
So, I'm looking at the item. It says Minute Mart is holding intoxicating liquor in the original, original package with Sunday sales license. Is that the same thing that Casey's would have just in their name?
Correct. Same, same license.
Any other further discussion?
I have a question.
Please proceed.
Mr. Skinnell, do you know how long that existing license has been there in that location?
If you indulge me and give me a little bit, I can look up that answer.
See, you should have given this one to Mr. Arroyo.
Pitch clock, pitch clock violation, yeah. So our records in City Works go back to, uh, 2018, which is when, uh, this was built out. Uh, I would say that it goes back even further than, than that. There has been a gas station there for, for quite some, some time. But our records, the current Minute Mart there has had at least gone back to 2018, and that's as far back as, as these records go. I would have to check, uh, paper records to see actually how far back it, it does go.
Okay. Anything else? Anyone else have other further questions, or...
I, uh, Mr. Mayor, I, um, and, and I, I could be wrong, but I, that's the Phillips 66, correct? That's currently there? Is that right?
It's the gas station on the south side. I know there's another gas station on the north side, and I, um, not exactly sure which one is the Phillips 66.
Yeah. It is. Okay. Okay, I just wanted to be, I think I'm clear on this location. I'm familiar with the area. If it's the one that I'm thinking of, um, I think it was selling liquor, I moved back in 2010, and it was selling liquor back then. It's been a long-established one. But I understand the concerns, uh, that the public abroad, I think they're...
I, I wanted to say, though, back in 2010, my son came to a council meeting, we live where she is now, and you guys denied the liquor license. And he spoke on, he, he was, he was 10 or 11, but you guys, this council at that time denied the liquor license, and right across from what's Phillips 66, you had McDonald's, you had another business.
Yeah, that's right.
So there's not a gas station right straight across like you stated, and I have never seen them sell liquor myself. I've gone in the stores myself.
Okay.
But I've never, they don't sell liquor. Because we, I know this voted down back then.
Okay.
And we'd never, it's never been brought back up.
Okay.
And this is why we've built chances to improve our neighborhood.
No, I understand. I understand. I'm just trying to be, uh, make sure I understand which, which building we're talking about. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. City Manager, I have a question. I'm not sure that the council indulged me on this, but if we were to hold this item, what's the process that we would go through to hold it so we could take a closer look at this?
For a continuance to a different meeting?
Right.
Let me defer to Mr. Skinnell on that.
Okay.
So this is a, a public hearing. Uh, the council could continue the, the public hearing to the next, uh, city council meeting.
Okay.
Uh, as part of the, the motion, you would, uh, include the date that, of the city council meeting that you are, uh, continuing that, that, uh, this case too.
Okay. Very good. Any further discussion? I, I would entertain a, a motion to just hold it so we could put, you know, put this public hearing on the next meeting, but that's not the rule.
I won't make a motion to move this on to the next, regular scheduled meeting.
Yeah, just, okay, keep, basically keep the, uh, public hearing open, and then revisit it the next council meeting. Okay, we've got a motion to... Okay, we've got a motion to put this in the next council meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
We've got a motion in a second. Any further discussion on the motion?
What, what are we holding for? I'm sorry. I, I'm here.
Yeah, my question was, could be held it?
Yeah, what, what, why would we hold it? May I ask of our reason why?
Right. I'll, if I can, I'll defer to a council member that made the motion. Just what's your thoughts, council member?
Well, there seems to be some discrepancy in whether or not they currently sell alcohol. So I would like to go in there myself and find out.
And I agree with you. I'd like to visit too, so.
Maybe get some more accurate information in terms of how long they've been selling alcohol there.
Okay. Does that help answer your question, sir?
Yeah.
Anyone else? Then there is a motion on the table to hold this until the next meeting with no further discussion. Madam City Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Spheres?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Roland?
Yes. So it's seven to zero to hold this to the next council meeting.
And do, for the record, do we need to state the exact date?
Yeah, that's going to be the April 17th city council meeting. So what we're doing right now is continuing the public hearing to April 17th council meeting, where it will be picked up then.
And can I ask a further question? I know there's some timeframes for you, Mr. Schannell, with regards to how we do this. Does that, does that impact any of your notices that we stay within state law?
No, because the council considered the item to that date, date certain. The public that was notified, they, they have that chain of following where that item is going to be considered. So you, it doesn't impact us in any way.
Okay, just want to make sure we're following state law. Okay. Then that motion, so hold passes seven to zero. That brings us to the next public hearing. That's why Mr. Schannell has stayed there, so he's ready to go. And, Madam City Clerk?
A full public hearing for the application received from Casey's Marketing Company, DBA Minute Mart 4344, for retail selling of intoxicating liquor of all kinds in the original package per Minute Mart 4344 located at 15800 East 23rd Street South. This is a full public hearing.
Yes, Mayor, members of the council. So this location is at the northeast corner of 23rd Street and Lee Summit Road. Again, this was a Minute Mart that had been operating there for, for many years. Minute Mart does have an existing intoxicating liquor in the original package license. Casey's will be acquiring them and will, and is seeking the same intoxicating liquor in the original package license. There are a few establishments within about 1,000 feet of this location that have existing liquor licenses, the Walgreens, the Hy-Vee, Hy-Vee Gas, Hy-Vee Market Grill. This item does meet the alcoholic beverage code. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Schannell. Anyone here to speak in favor of or opposition to this liquor license application?
Kenneth Love, 16808 East George Franklin Drive in Penice, Missouri. I'm in favor of moving forward with Casey's. But there's a problem. It's called underage being able to buy alcohol and tobacco. Again, it's not to store managers, because it has been brought to their attention. It is, since we have some fine IPD officers in here, to understand it is certain workers in there that are allowing these things to happen. Besides that, I've never seen a problem there.
Thank you, Mr. Love. Anyone else to speak in favor of or opposition to this application? Anyone in favor of speaking in favor of or in opposition to this application? Seeing none out of this public hearing, Madam City Clerk?
Council actions request on the application received from Casey's Marketing Company, DBA Minute Mart 4344, for retail selling of intoxicating liquor of all kinds in the original package license for Minute Mart 4344 located at 15800 East 23rd Street South.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
There's a, there's a Casey who's like real close vicinity to that. In fact, probably like a half a mile in the other direction. Is there any indication or they plan to keep it open?
Again, they have not indicated what they're, what they're going to do with that. The Casey's that is located to the, to the west, yeah. Like you said, that has been there since I think about the mid 90s. Not exactly sure what they're going to do with this.
I guess a court can do it. They can do it too, right? That's all I have.
Anyone else have other further questions, comments? Okay, seeing no further discussion. I'll close the public hearing and. Get ready for the vote. Okay. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spheres?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Roland?
Yes. And this item passes seven to zero. This takes us to our final public hearing. Oh, we have two more. Oh, this is number six, sorry. Yep, I wrote it in the wrong spot, excuse me. Okay, this takes us to our sixth public hearing. And is your arm good?
Doing good.
Just on pitch count, since we're doing pitch count jokes. All right. I'll open this public hearing. Madam City Clerk?
A full public hearing for the application received from Casey's Marketing Company, DBA Minute Mart 4347, for retail selling of intoxicating liquor of all kinds in the original package for Minute Mart 4347 located at 11109 East 23rd Street South. This is a full public hearing.
Yeah, so this Minute Mart location is on the south side of 23rd Street, a couple hundred feet west of Sterling. This Minute Mart, again, has been, been operating at that location for, for a number of years. Casey's will be acquiring that and seeks the same liquor license that, that Minute Mart currently has, which is the intoxicating liquor in the original package. And there are a few establishments. There's a 7-Eleven that's located to, to the west and a Walgreens and Price Chopper that are located to east on the other side of Sterling. That concludes staff's presentation and I'm available for any questions.
Any questions? Okay, this is a full public hearing. Anyone here to speak in favor of or opposition to this application? Anyone, you would come forward, please.
Barbara Elliott, I live at 2855 South Harvard Avenue in Independence. It seems to me like there are so many places for people to buy liquor anywhere that it's close enough that they can get to without adding all of these additional liquor places where they can buy liquor. And having all of the Casey's being liquor and now the, all the Minute Mart's and stuff, it would be my opinion that if any of them were given license to sell liquor, would be too many. I'm, I'm really opposed to having all the liquor being sold. And so I, I appreciate your thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak in opposition to or in favor of? Anyone wanting to speak in favor of or opposition to? Anyone for information purposes only? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Madam City Clerk?
Council actions request on the application received from Casey's Marketing Company, DBA Minute Mart 4347, for retail selling of intoxicating liquor of all kinds in the original package license for Minute Mart 4347 located at 11109 East 23rd Street South.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
If I could ask Mr. Schannell a question?
Please proceed.
Mr. Schannell, is it, is it fair to say that most of the establishments like this in Independence have a liquor license? Would that be a fair assessment or not?
I, I cannot think of a gas station, convenience store that, like a Casey's, like a QuickTrip that do not sell alcohol.
My concern is that if we vote no on something like this, that it makes it more challenging for a business to stay in operation. Whether they go to that store or the one next door. I, I would think that would be a fair assessment.
What we typically hear is that it, it puts them at a, at an unfair advantage because they like the convenience of being able to get gas, get ice, get something to, to drink. If there, if there is alcohol beverage there that they desire to take home or to some other place, they would like to have that, that convenience.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, please proceed.
Well, one thing, could, could one of the officers be so kind of? Now I'm going to have to go get my sunglasses here in about 10 minutes for sure. Thank you. To answer your question, Councilman, I'd have the great pleasure of meeting Mr. Salton, who is the owner of Fave Trip on 23rd Street, almost right across from Hill Park there. They do not sell alcohol and they are very successful and have a great loyal crowd. So it can be done.
Any further discussion? Councilmember, please proceed.
Just to clarify, we're actually not increasing the number of places that sell alcohol. We are merely, since there is a change in ownership, the same number will have the ability to sell alcohol as they did before, just under new ownership.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
So this, this Mini Mart group owns all of these. So I'm assuming Casey is buying this as a package deal. They have not, have they indicated that, that this deal goes south or they're not interested if one of them is not able to obtain liquor sales?
We did not ask that, that question, but like, like you said, they are buying all of the Minute Mart.
Well, and, and since we have one that's open still, maybe we could reach out and, and inquire if that throws a curve ball in, in, in the, in the cell at all, please? Is that something we could do?
We can, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Should I close the public hearing?
Yeah, this is the item.
Okay. No further discussion. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spheres?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Roland?
Yes, thank you. And this item passes seven to zero. And I believe that brings us to our final public hearing. Is that correct? So we are in fact, this is the last one. This is the last inning. There will be no overtime. So open the gap. Please proceed.
A full public hearing for the application received from Casey's Marketing Company, DBA Minute Mart 4351, for retail selling of intoxicating liquor of all kinds in the original package license for Minute Mart 4351 located at 4208 South Nolan Road. This is a full public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So this Minute Mart is located at the northwest corner of Nolan and 42nd Street. Minute Mart has operated here for a, a number of years. Casey's will be acquiring them, taking over the operations. There, there are two liquor licenses within about 1,000 feet of here. We have the, the Price Chopper and then we have the Red Lobster, which is to the south. And that concludes staff's presentation and available for any questions.
And just to clarify, this is the gas station right there by the hotel?
That is correct.
And across the street from?
From Burger King.
Yep, thank you very much. Okay. Any further discussion? Anyone here to speak in favor of or opposed to? Anyone here to speak in favor of or opposed to? Anyone here to speak in favor of or opposed to? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Council action is a request on the application received from Casey's Marketing Company, DBA Minute Mart 4351, for retail selling of intoxicating liquor of all kinds in the original package license for Minute Mart 4351 located at 4208 South Nolan Road.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Councilmember Spheres?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Roland?
Yes. And this will bring us to non-ordinance items.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Make a motion to change the work order of the way we're going to handle our non-ordinance action items, taking item number two first and then item number three and then item number one.
So we'll go to two, three, one, if I'm hearing you correctly. Okay, we've got a motion to change the agenda on these items. Item number two would be first, number three would be second, and number one would be third. Do I have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spheres?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
No.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Roland?
Yes. And so that'll bring us to item number two here.
Council action is requested on the approval of the 2023-2024 casual liability renewal with an estimated annual cost of $803,391.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Question for the city manager.
Please.
I'm just wondering if we have done any analysis relative to different levels of retention of our deductible on, on these products, on this, this type of insurance?
At various times. I'm not certain the most recent iteration of that council member. I know it's been done at various times. But I'd have to double check with finance staff to confirm the date of our last such analysis.
Okay, well, I don't want to hold this up for that. I just, you know, that kind of analysis, I think, is helpful relative for, for future years so that we can evaluate how often we hit the claim, hit the policy and, and how, you know, the deductible might impact this or not.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Councilmember Spheres?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Roland?
Yes. And that'll bring us to item number three. Please proceed.
Council actions requested to direct and authorize the city manager to initiate a process to evaluate all options relative to the future ownership model of Independence Power in Light.
Any discussion on this item? Please proceed.
So I know we've got a large audience today. People with a vested interest in the future of IPL. And I would argue that every person in the entire city has a vested interest in the future of IPL. And as the citizen owners, we're going to have some important discussions about future rate increases. And I know that the PUAB has suggested that we initiate a 6% increase to offset a reduction that we had made during COVID. The long-term viability of this really important asset means that we have to look at all the aspects of what is really complicated decision-making. I'm personally in favor of making the 6% rate increase. I think that it is essential to the long-term financial viability of this organization. But all of those things need to be part of a comprehensive look at long-term investments in a rapidly evolving energy environment. And I know how much time and energy that the staff has put into looking at this. This is one of those things where there's no easy crystal ball for when different assets are going to become available and the complexity of changing technology. But we're getting ready to make commitments that are 50-year commitments. We have some existing 50-year commitments and some of those things are changing with our coal-fired power plants where we get more than 70% of our energy. I think everyone has the same goal, which is affordable, reliable, long-term energy source. And I think that's incumbent upon any large business to think the best that you can with the information available, to think about what your long-term process is. And that's, to me, what these requests are. What is every option available to the city? What is that cost? And having a discussion with the community to say, these are the sorts of costs and benefits that you're going to get for every available possibility to the city. So I appreciate being able to think about that in the long term. Thank you.
Please proceed.
I want to echo Councilmember McCandless's comments and make a few more. You know, before being elected a year ago, I knew that understanding the detail You know, before being elected a year ago, I knew that understanding the details of IPL and its operations would be one of my biggest learning curves. Over the past year, I've listened to multiple presentations by IPL staff, met with them numerous times. I've met with other members of the city management team on multiple occasions and met with my colleagues on the city council several times. In addition, I've reviewed several studies, listened to webinars, met with residents, and attended industry events, all in an effort to better understand the issues of running a municipal electric utility. And while I'm certainly way more informed than I was prior to this, I don't yet know what the best thing is for IPL. Let's be very clear. Running a municipal utility in 2023 is not an easy task. There's no comparison to running such a utility as when IPL was founded in 1901. We are in a world where a number of ever-changing factors, including regulation, power generation options, the relatively recent evolution of renewable energy, and multiple other factors make operating municipal utility challenging. I don't see any of this to suggest we're not up to the challenge. This is in part what we were elected to do, and I for one am willing to spend the time and energy to manage our power and light as best we can. The problem we have, as we sit here today, is that IPL is on a course to a financial train wreck. Due to what I believe to be questionable decisions in the past, we are currently below our target reserves and we're on a course to fall below our minimum reserve threshold in two years and completely use up our reserves just two years after that. So clearly, something has to change. I've heard arguments for purchasing new turbines, and while I believe these have some merit, I believe they represent only a small portion of the solution needed to address the challenges we face at IPL. My concern is not about addressing a single power generation question that might, and I underscore the word "might," solve some of our problems. My concern is what does it take to make IPL a viable entity to provide power to independent residents for 20 to 50 years in the future? What types of rate increases, and let's be clear, there need to be rate increases to keep IPL viable? What types of investments in power generation resources? What improvements in transmission and distribution infrastructure? And multiple other questions need to be answered based on the best information we can obtain to conclude the best route forward for independent residents in regards to our electric utility. I believe the action before us to instruct the city manager to initiate a process to evaluate all options for the future of IPL is the best course of action at the present. It's a comprehensive focus on what's best for IPL rate players for the next 20 to 50 years and not in effort to address one specific concern as legitimate as that may be. I believe it will provide the city with information needed to make the best strategic decision for the future. And it's such a critical decision that we're suggesting the voters make the final decision as to the path forward. But only with good information that is free from the bias of interested parties can the citizens make such a decision. My hope is that this course of action will provide us with the level of analysis we've not had and tell us what has to happen in the way of rate changes, infrastructure investment, power generation investment, et cetera, to allow IPL to be viable for the long term. And then it will be the decision of the residents as to whether that or some other option is best. So I'm in support of this action and will be voting in favor of it and in opposition to the purchase of the two aerodrivative combustion turbines in an effort to get to what I think is the best long-term solution for IPL and not what might be a solution for just now. And lest anyone be confused, as I stated today, I have no preconceived notion as to what my opinion will be at the end of this process regarding the best ownership model for IPL. This is about getting the information necessary for our residents to make an informed and logical decision regarding the future of this important asset for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I've wrestled with this for the almost three years I've been here. I have made no bones about it. I think that IPL, having been raised in independence, having lived here, having suffered through ice storms, remember when the lines were on the road and the trees were hanging down, and we would lose power for a brief period of time? And that's when I was a kid. Tornadoes came through our town, we would be out of power for a brief period of time. All I knew as a child is that when I flipped the switch, there was lights. And when I didn't turn them off, I got yelled at. Dad always made me turn off the lights. It wasn't until later on, when I moved back, that I began to see that this utility is a huge asset to this city. And it's a public utility, which means you own it. We don't own it, you own it. And I have made no bones about it. I want to see, I would like to rebuild IPL. I would like to have the ability to generate. I'd like to be able to sell generation. And I struggle with what I hear. People, I'll just say it, there are people in this room that want to sell this utility. And I can tell you that what I, the approach that I've had hasn't worked, so I've taken another approach. And what I've asked for is, part of our strategy session, we talked about an action plan, a city action plan, which I think we've all kind of come to that agreement that we've got to, we need to begin to look at it with a different strategy. And, you know, when you talk about a public utility, we need public input. We have to have public input. What do you want as owners? Because the way I read the charter, if they sold this place tomorrow, we're writing over 50,000 checks to ratepayers. They'd be your money. That would be my understanding, and that's what I would say. But a city action plan, I think, is something that we've come to some agreement on, that it can be very useful in determining the future of our public utility. Because it allows the city to carefully consider the needs of you, our residents, the ratepayers, the employees who work here, who depend on us, to make strategic decisions about how to provide essential services to you. Public utility plays a critical role in a city's infrastructure. It makes us attractive to capital investment. It's why we can land industrial projects and grow the city the way it should be. That should be part of our strategy. But you have to agree to that. You have to want to see that. It affects your daily lives. We know that. So it's important to have a plan in place to ensure that the services are provided in a sustainable and efficient manner. I think we can all agree with that. A city action plan can help to identify areas where improvements need to be made in the public utility, such as upgrading infrastructure. I think our TND is one of the best in the areas, but when you're talking about different types of energy coming through, and I think, I don't know that it's in the condition to make it work for us. So there may be more investment we need there, expanding services, prioritizing investments, and allocate resources effectively. So our action plan can take into account changing demographics, economic trends, technological advances, and they are, there is technology that's moving fast in energy. And that impacts our public utility. So we have to adapt and remain responsive to the needs of you. And overall, a city action plan provides a strategic framework for decision-making related to public utilities. It helps to ensure that the city's infrastructure and essential services are sustainable, efficient, and responsive to the needs of its residents, both now and in the future. You know, and I wanted to say on this, it's a privilege to sit here and to represent you. You know, we've been given a precious gift from leaders of the past with a great asset. I wouldn't sell my children's inheritance, and I'm sure not about to sell yours. So what I'm saying to you is, for this council, we need to take a moment and we need to reflect on what kind of city we are going to leave for the next generation of residents and the future leaders of this city. And if we leave it in the condition that we found it in, then shame on us. But I'm not going to just sit back and say, well, we can't fix it, so let's just sell. We can come to some conclusions and we can get the input from our public who owns these utilities and hear what you want done. And then we can make good decisions with your input. That's all I'm asking for. I can't spend another dime on anything until we get a consensus that we're going to stay the course, rebuild, just remodel, do something that moves our city forward and your utility, making it something that you're proud of, that's affordable, sustainable, and something that we can pass on to the future generations of independent residents and the future leaders of this city. So I'm not going to be voting to spend any money until we have a consensus on where we're taking this utility. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor? Thank you. If I may address the city manager, please?
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, if you don't mind following along for a moment, I want to address how we intend and expect this process to work. So I want to put this on the record, Mr. City Manager, just so there's a record, so we're clear. So the process has been discussed, that's been informally agreed upon, that's expected. Is that your office will prepare RFPs or RFQs or whatever the appropriate documentation is, so that you will hire two separate consultants that will each prepare a plan. One plan is the big comprehensive plan, Plan Number One. Comprehensive plan takes into account everything we've got going. Our labor, our contracts, power production, our generation, our investments, our debt, all of it. And at the end of that plan, we're going to have a big old comprehensive look at what we need to do, what we need to buy, what we need to invest in. This is the best effort we can get at how we make a big, beautiful, citizen-owned, public power utility. This is how we make IPL a beautiful utility moving forward. Number two, Plan Two, the other consultant is going to put together what it looks like to sell it. And all the things that are involved in that, including bids, including do we keep TND? What parts do we keep? What parts do we not keep? What are the options? Are there options? What's it look like? It'll include rate increases, all these parts, because there's lots of ugliness that comes with that, too. We don't know what they are. Someone's going to have to tell us, somebody that's, you know, done this kind of thing before. I just want to make this clear, though. This is not us picking. We are not picking. This is not the council taking sides. This is the councils, this is the council not picking sides. Mr. City Manager, you understand that, correct?
Understood.
This is also not your office making a recommendation. Do you understand that?
Understood.
We are providing, to the best of our ability, and with experts' advice, the best information we can, so that the people that own this utility can vote. For the first time since this utility has existed, they are going to choose the future of this utility. Mr. Walker, you agree?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Mine will be very brief, but Independence Power and Light is definitely our most valuable asset. And with as important as energy is now, I mean, it's going to be even more important in five, 10, 15, 20 years, and I will not support anything that mentions selling this thing, this utility. So I'll be voting no on this. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just one more.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure. And at the end of whatever the studies are, I would like to have public input, public hearings, public input, answer questions, and know that there's the flexibility to take what you're saying to us and go back and look at it and bring something back to you. Has to happen that way. So I ask, that's my ask of you, Mr. City Manager, that there has to be public input. Has to be public input.
I would agree, councilmember, and though we, you know, the agenda item really kind of speaks to retaining that expertise to study the issue, the two sides, as Councilmember Hobart just articulated. But internally, as we have, you know, started to prepare in the event the council were to approve this item, we also believe engaging communication expertise, people that do this for a living, who have the ability to organize public meetings, to find the locations where we can meet the citizens where they're at, at a time of their convenience, that will be a part of our recommended strategy as well. And in all seriousness, I think we'll know when we're done with that part, when people kind of stop showing up at that, but until that time, we'll keep going out and finding people in all four corners of the city.
I appreciate that, because I know that the city can gain some valuable insights. It presents a level of transparency that we have got to establish and have that with the people that own this utility, that's you. So, and then you tell us how you, what you like, what you don't like, how you want us to pursue. That's because it's yours. I can't say that enough. It's a public utility.
Thank you.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. I would concur with my colleagues when it comes to public engagement. Councilman Steinmeier, within the ordinance that we're looking at, it does state this process would occur over the next several months to include a series of public meetings, town hall forums, and question-and-answer sessions across the community to ensure participation and to afford a thorough understanding of issues by the ratepayers. So I fully intend to make sure that our staff is, our staff is going to make sure that we have those public engagements and get all that feedback digested with our citizens, with our business owners, with our potential future people who are looking at Independence for Development. All of this is very crucial, so I'm in supportive of this measure.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. I've got some comments here. People have always already said a lot of the things that I planned to say, so I won't use all of my comments I had prepared. But when I was running for office and I walked to 6,000 doors, one of the issues that came up most often was what do we do with IPL? And to be honest with you, at the time, I didn't know what to do. And as we've studied this issue over the last year, it's become clearer that we've got to do a lot of things. And I think the first responsibility of a leader is to make sure that we define reality. And I think that's why we need outside experts to help us to find what is reality for our power company. What do we need to do with it? How do we run it? How do we operate it? We need to see what is the reality of IPL. And that's what this resolution is about, is really defining the reality of IPL. I also believe in the concept of leading with questions. I think it's a very, very important leadership idea and a leadership role. Leaders should ask, where are we going? And my colleagues have been doing that tonight. Are we going in the right direction? How will we get there? Here's a powerful question. What is the best choice for you, the citizen owners of this utility? I love the fact that my colleagues have come to the consensus that we will make sure that the voters, that the citizens of the city, make that choice. So really, the question is, what's best for your wallets in the long term? Not only in the next two years, three years, four years, but 20 years and 50 years from now. How do we put a utility together that's really sustainable for the long term? So the question's about you owning So the question's about you owning your utility. I also have some other, other questions. What are the benefits of ownership typically? And some of them are mentioned, local control, lower rates, improved reliability. And I've got to be very, very proud of the staff and what they have done with reliability of our power company. There's no question, they do a great job of that, and I want to, I can't state that enough. It's great reliability and great, great service. Also, owning the utility is greater flexibility. We can do a lot of things with the, with utility. Also, local economic benefits, we get lots of jobs from it. The next question is what is the future IPL? How do we evaluate it? Can we compete in the future? How will we find the answers to that? And I think we need to ask other experts outside of our city to find out what is the best way to, to operate our, our utility going forward. So how are we going to run this utility in the future? Will our utility be able to compete in the distant future with solar and wind taking up so much of the bandwidth of energy going forward? And I think that's the really, this would be easier to run IPL in 1980. Buy some coal, run the plant, boom, it was easy. That is not the world that we live in today. It's an incredibly complex, changing world. So are we big enough to compete into the future? And so these are some of the important, powerful questions. And I'm sure some of you were really excited when you saw me flip through some pages there. And to make my comments briefer, but they were already stated by some of my colleagues. So I'm, I'm excited. I'm in favor of voting for this item. Tonight represents another positive step of our city. It represents a historic night. Tonight is one of the more, was one of the examples of us as a council, listening to you, the constituents, and taking action to move in a positive direction. Each of us has been elected, and for too long, this can has been kicked down the road and has left everyone frustrated. Citizens have been frustrated with the cost of the bill, staff have been frustrated by the never-ending line of contingencies, delays, and defeats that councils have given them in the past. And they're frustrated by the inability to build a consensus and directions for IPL. And I hear that and I understand that. Once the review study is done, when and only when will we feel that we have the full understanding of all clear options of how to proceed? You, the citizens, will vote on which option you believe is in your best interest. I'm very excited to be supporting this effort, and I'm proud of my colleagues for picking up this can and not kicking it down the road. I actually thought about it a little being a little corny, having a cannon kicking off the table at this point, but I thought that might be corny, so, and I'm seeing people shake their head, shouldn't have mentioned it. All right. With that, I will certainly open up to any further questions or comments. If not, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
No.
McCandless.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. Thank you. And then that brings us to our next item. And if you can proceed, Madam City Clerk. Sorry about that.
Council approval is requested to purchase two aeroderivative combustion turbines from Pro Energy Services of Sedalia, Missouri, as recommended by staff and endorsed by the Public Utility Advisory Board.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Okay. Madam City, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spears.
No.
Perkins.
No.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
No.
Steinmeier.
No.
Hobart.
No.
Mayor Rowland.
No. And this item fails six to one. And that brings us to... Yep, first readings. Please proceed.
Bill number 23-022, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to approve a cost-share agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission from the I-70 and Little Blue Parkway interchange project, project number 112303, cost-share project number KU0033, and increasing appropriations. Bill number 23-023, an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 14 of the Independent City Code pertaining to marijuana facilities. Bill number 23-024, an ordinance approving the 2023 to 2024 Annual Action Plan for the CDVG and Home Programs, authorizing applications to the Department of Housing and Urban Development, authorizing execution of a written agreement and acceptance of CDVG and Home Program funds and making the necessary appropriations. Bill number 23-025, an ordinance amending Chapter 5 of the City Code, Business and Occupation Licenses.
Thank you. And that brings us to Councilmember for comments, am I correct? Okay. Councilmember Stewart, any comments for the evening?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. City Manager, I was driving down, to the speaker's point earlier about the guardrail being removed on Salisbury Road. I happened to notice that earlier, because I live like two tenths of a mile from there and drive down Salisbury every day. Could you do me a favor and find out why this was removed? I just couldn't even fathom why. I mean, I see, you know, like I said, I'm on Salisbury all the time. There's always speeders on there. You know, it, when it does get slick, you know, I mean, I could see somebody sliding off, you know, into one of those houses. So even beyond that, I mean, what would it take to get it put back in? Because I just don't see why it was taken out to begin with. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember?
Thank you, Mayor. Had a good, had a good pleasure to attend the Jackson County Historical Society Annual Dinner Thursday, gosh, March 23rd, I guess we're already in April, to help celebrate Ralph, gosh, Ralph Goldsmith, who, for his historic preservation recognition from Jackson County Historical Society. Everybody knows Ralph is up on the square driving the Missouri mule. So it was a good, fun event. There was many recipients, but he received one of them. It was kind of fun listening to him tell a little backstory, too, about himself. It was a good time. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember?
Well, I don't want to steal anyone else's thunder, but we had this little thing called election yesterday, and, and at least my perspective is, is it turned out good, and I hope that it'll lead to maybe another building override that way, another time, sometime sooner as opposed to later. We spent a fair amount of time tonight talking about both liquor and IPL. I'm not sure those two are connected at all, but, but, you know, it's not, neither one is insignificant, and the work we do, and all this is, is really important. What we really are talking about relative to IPL, I think, is really critical, and, and I'm looking forward to that process. And lastly, well, I'm, I'm going to ask Councilmember Kim McCandless, who she's going to talk about our experience last Wednesday.
Uh, no, you can.
Okay. So last Wednesday, we spent, the two of us spent the morning with a couple of our police folks visiting homeless camps. Very enlightening experience. It was both, from my perspective, challenged my thinking and yet made me more concerned about how we address that concern in our community. It is something we're talking about a lot. We're, we are making effort to address that, and I just want to assure, I, I heard, that was probably the number one item I heard as I was walking door to door in my campaign, was about homelessness. And so, you know, I just think, you know, I just want you to know that we are working on that. We, we, there's not any quick fixes. I, I was very interested in the comments of the two police officers, questions that we asked relative to how to best deal with this situation. And, and it's just, all it did was raise more questions than it did provide answers. So all I'm saying is that, that, that isn't topic. It was helpful to me to go out and, and spend time that way and encourage others to do likewise. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A number of good things going on these days. It's been, I don't know when it was announced, but, and I'm maybe stealing Councilmember McCandless's thunder, but I wanted to specifically thank her. She launched a, or helped launch a program that has got homeless people picking up trash so, and they can get paid, and they can work through a program and even get a job. They can get into housing, they can get into programming, and they can become not homeless, which is the solution to homelessness, or unhousing, or any of the number of progressive terms that you should use. So that's really amazing. That's one positive thing we've got going. The council, I'm also very proud of, a couple of months ago, all voted unanimously to support the weed tax. And as a result, it got on the ballot, and our citizens overwhelmingly supported it, and it passed, and that is step one in what I hope will become, passing whatever version of a tax or other financial support we need to put forward with the citizens to replace our 50-ish-year-old police building, which is insane. In the time I've been practicing law, Leewood is now on their second police building. We have the oldest police building in the entire area, and we still are the only one that our folks have to walk outside to take inmates to court, which is incredibly unsafe in many, many ways. So I'm really proud of us as a council. I'm proud of the citizens that came to vote. I'm proud of the folks that ran the campaign. I'm thankful. And as a city, I'm, again, yet another positive step. So I love it, and thank you. Mr. Walker, you should also be proud of all the staff, your communications, all the folks on your side, Captain Dustman, or captain. It's been a minute since he was a captain, Chief Dustman and his staff, that, that gave tours, that, that he shows up at every community event. He did his part by far as well. So thank you. About IPL briefly, I know there's a lot of IPL folks here, probably, I'm, I shouldn't assume, but for those of you that are not happy, that are disappointed, I would say this. I see it as us taking a step. I see it as a step forward. We have got to make a decision. We have capacity guaranteed through 2030 with the SPP. We have cash that falls off a cliff sometime in the next 10 years. A big decision has to be made sometime in that time. This is a hard decision to make, and my colleagues were courageous in making it. Now, it's hard. It's a hard decision and very well may not be popular. I understand that. If you're upset, if you're disappointed, feel free to point that at me. Do not point that at your leadership. Jim Nail, Joe, and I will say your last name wrong. Joe H. Through the many, many, many discussions we've had, these guys fight for you more than you ever realize, your labor leaders, more than you realize. So have faith in them, please. They're going to do a good job for you, and they do a good job for you now. So this will be a long process. It will be a thoughtful process, and there's going to be a lot that goes into it. So have faith. Again, if you're mad, upset, disappointed, I'm a big target. One more thing. There are two former council members in the audience that I'm not going to name.
Everybody's stunned, we're sitting together.
It's like Ghostbusters at the end when they say cats and dogs sleeping together. So you kind of have to have been around for a while, but these two council members do not like each other, and that's...
We love each other.
Then that's putting it mildly. And for the pit bull issue to bring them together is even more ironic. But if there's anything more indicative that this city does have the ability to heal and to be positive and to bring people together, it's sitting right there in that second row.
Can I say one word?
Yes, ma'am.
He wants to put a muzzle on me.
Thank you.
Councilmember, you're trying to follow Lucy there, aren't you?
Yeah. She's a constituent, I'd have to take it off, so. I like it. Yeah, I, I, first I want to say thank you for coming on a Wednesday night. I am not a fan of this facility in terms of, of the conference, because it wasn't designed for this. And, and I don't know that it's, it's working to the best benefit of our, of our residents. And, and I'm not saying that I, I want to do away with what we've done, but I'd like to see if we could modify it, and I'd like to ask that as, as a possibility that we talk about this, that when it's a non-candidate election, that we do not move our council meetings from Monday to Wednesday. And so I would hope that our council would get behind that and just amend the rules to be able to do that. I mean, I've, I've been playing boom mic. It's just, yeah, that's probably better. But I, I would hope I can get some support on that. We just recently completed, Mr. City Manager, the BMI audit. Is that right? Is it? Did I say it right? It ended Tuesday, correct, for the audit on our health benefits for retirees that extended to across the, the city staff as well?
Tomorrow. Tomorrow's the last day.
Well, they told me I had to get it in till the 4th. You'll be happy to know that, that Jackson County has officially called me married after 41 years. I had to get an official certificate stamped by the county to officially be married. So I've been living with this woman for 41 years. I told her we're finally married. Jackson County agrees, so. But anyway, that was just part of the audit. I'm hoping that we can get the results of that audit. I'd like to, to, to have it broke down into two categories with the retirees and, and the city staff, just to see what we spent on the audit, how much we're saving as a result of the audit. I'd like a pretty thorough detail on it if we could and get it to all the council to, for review. I, too, failed to, to mention tonight, when I talk about IPL, I'm not talking about a bunch of turbines and buildings, I'm talking about the employees. You're the greatest asset to this city. You keep the lights on, you do things, you, you're first responders that don't get enough attention and love. You get out there and do things in the middle of the night in sometimes very dangerous conditions, and we don't say thank you enough to you. So you are obviously the greatest asset that we have in IPL. So please forgive me of that. It's important to me that we, like I said, I, I've said we need to rebuild, and it's important for you that we have someplace for you to show up and work every day, and that we do it right, and that we make sure that you, you and your families are taken care of. And that's, that's a big goal of mine as part of this. And I believe our public feels the same way towards you. We just got to give them a chance to say it. I found out today through an email that we lost an independent school teacher, Mrs. Bland. I knew her as Mrs. Toomey, and Mrs. Toomey was my kindergarten teacher. And, and she meant a lot to me. She, her husband was a Air Force fighter pilot shot down in Vietnam, and he was an MIA. And I remember... And I remember that was the first little silver band. I had Major Samuel L. Toomey III on that band. I wish I still had it, but she was such an incredible woman, as many independent school teachers were, and my sister ended up student teaching with her a bit and ended up being a, a long career kindergarten teacher, which I'll never understand why anybody would want to be a kindergarten teacher. Must be fame and fortune. But, but we lost her on, last Thursday, the 30th, and that's, it's special to me because that was my birthday, and, and I just thought, oh, what a special woman she was. So, anyway, I wanted to just give a shout out to her family and just let, let them know how much I appreciate and value that woman. She gave me such a foundation, and I, and as many teachers of Independence have, so just wanted to share that. So, that's all I have tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember?
Thank you. I want to second what Dan talked about with the Independence Together with roadside trash cleanup. It's gone really well. They've already started enrolling their second group of folks with the hope that they will be able to save funds for permanent housing. And, you know, certainly the goal of city cleanup and beautification, I want to just give a shout out to city staff who do that all the time. So, you know, it's just that there's more trash than there are people to pick it up. So, I, I don't want the city staff to think that we don't recognize the work that they do all the time to, to do the best that they can. I'd also like to give a shout out to MidCont and Public Library, went to the new, to the groundbreaking for the new Independence Library Bridge, which will be over off of Little Blue. And that's an area that's growing and with lots of kids, and so that's a great location for a library. I think that's going to be a great asset to that part of town. It is pothole season. Our municipal folks work really hard to fill those, but they don't drive on your street every day. So, if you know of potholes, you can, you can report those through the Independence Now app, and that helps them batch them so that they can be efficient. Also, that we have a new group for Citizens Academy, which is a way to get to know the work of your police department. They'll be starting a new class coming up soon. You can find that on social media or come and talk to us afterwards if you're interested in that. That meets on Thursday nights for, I think, nine weeks, but a really good opportunity to see the special work that the police force does. The last thing I had was, Mr. City Manager, can you talk about, on the information only, the item that says update on special counsel recommendation?
I would be happy to. Thank you for pointing that out. So, last July, these councils, special counsel stood at that podium and gave his report on the IPL overtime issue related to the reconstruction in the IPD, sorry, too much IPL talk tonight, and, and the recommendations regarding the reconstruction and the detention unit. I'm really, as you'll see in there, I'm pleased to announce that eight months later, we have implemented or addressed all but approximately six of those recommendations, and those six are related to the issues that will need to be addressed through the collective bargaining process around FLSA and overtime. So, we, of course, have the council's resolution directing us to engage in those negotiations when each work agreement comes open. But we have addressed our procurement policies, we have addressed our facility maintenance needs, and strengthened our policies there. We have changed and adopted through the council action our personnel policies for our non-represented employees on overtime. So, up and down the board, my staff has done an excellent job of taking what was a very unfortunate and unacceptable situation and made the city in a better place eight months later. So, I'm pleased with that. Still more work to do, as I mentioned, but we've come a long way in a short period of time.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. And I also want to commend you for the work you've done on Independence Together, so I think that's excellent. So, thank you for doing that. You've got a lot of things going on in the city. Councilmember, I agree with you completely on amending the rules to change it. I, that will be easy, let's introduce that, get it done. So, completely agree with you on that. The other thing I want to do is commend my colleagues and commend everyone here tonight to bespoke, incredibly civil, incredibly polite, incredibly professional. That's been the term is be polite, professional, and productive, and I think that's really going everywhere, and I just really, I cannot say thank you enough for that. One of the things I didn't mention in my IPL, so just to throw the I bill in one for time, this is actually a study that's online. It was actually done last year by our management analyst, and I think it's, it'll give you, there's an executive summary in the front of it, you know, to read the whole thing, but I think it's really, really important to read on what our rates are and what, what's the rate structure of the city of Independence. That's what's really brought me to this point to make that decision we made tonight. And, and then also on Saturday, one of the things I heard when I walked door to door was cleanup, and so I will be out there on Saturday doing the cleanup, and Meg helped me, I forget in the park, are we at Rock Creek Park, is that correct?
We're in Rotary Park along Rock Creek Trail.
Okay. Rock Creek Trail, Rotary Park, so please come out, that'll be from 9 to 11, and I'll bring some donuts, but if you're not there early enough, you won't get them. I'm not going to buy a ton, so, but I'll buy some. So, and Ken says, raised his hand, said he will be there and be early enough to get a donut, okay, Ken? So, absolutely. All right. With that, we'll adjourn that meeting. Thank you all.